Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting. This is May 16th, 2023 at 6 o'clock in the Selectment's chambers. I'd like to open this meeting. Call the meeting to order and a roll call, please.
Teresa Ian-Morris present.
Joseph Shane present.
Travis Exnderian present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to all our veterans, past and present. This meeting is going to be recorded and uploaded to YouTube when it's finished. 1.4 Chairman's additions and deletions. I do not have any.
Were you going to add the second volunteer response form for the Conservation Commission? Or are we going to just use the?
Well, I providing that I did get the documentation for the recommendation, did we get that?
I believe we got the.
I got the response form and yes, I did get that. So yeah, we can add that. So let's do that. Second portion of form number four, I guess. 4.4.1. So we'll add 4.41. This would be a volunteer response for an appointment for James Dororian to the Conservation Commission. So we can add that. Anything else? Any additions? Okay. And then the minutes for 4/11. I'll take the motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from 4/11 in 2023.
Second.
I understand.
We can still second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Actually, we technically can.
You can even vote, Jim.
You can even vote if you want, but that's okay.
You're allowed to.
Any, any changes? Anybody have anything to add?
I can say anything.
My right on.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a whole, so that passes. If the board pleases, I'm going to jump right into 4.6, discuss and vote on the transfers of land from the Townsend Conservation Land Trust to the town. That's okay with both of you? I'd like to continue with that one.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you moving me up into the agenda. I'm Ray Lyons, I'm an attorney representing the Townsend Conservation Land Trust. The trust is in the process of merging into the North County Land Trust and as part of that process, probably things will work out to transfer four parcels of property that the trust owns to the town. Town meeting approved this during the May 2022 annual town meeting. So we're here tonight to finish off the process that was begun at that town meeting last year. I have a motion for one of you to read and get approved, and then I have this deed. And what you're doing tonight is the, the trust has already signed this deed over to the town. You're voting to accept the deed so that I can put it on record.
I make a motion to approve and accept as a gift a deed from the Townsend Conservation Land Trust for four parcels of land as approved and authorized by annual town meeting vote held on May 3rd, 2022, or in article 21.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion, run.
For your records?
Yeah. I'm very well aware of the process, so I'm very glad we're finally getting.
To this point.
Yeah, to this point.
It's approved. If you could sign, I understand Mrs. Slajek is a notary.
Well, we have to vote. We do have to vote.
All those in favor?
Uh, Shane, God.
Okay.
Oh, my notary standing.
Thank you. I think he knows who you are.
It has all three of us on mention.
I brought my ID.
A little tidbit as they call them, an acknowledgement, because a notary doesn't need to see you sign. He needs to see you say, yes, that's my signature.
Yeah.
Oh, really? I didn't know that. Now I want something different.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a little unfortunate.
I have to like, sure. I'm sure this day will diligently send me out of notice.
I'm sure it would.
Do you want to attract this table to the thing?
Yeah.
So for your information, I'll be recording this electronically.
Okay.
And I will receive back from the registry a receipt showing the look and page information and a copy of the recorded document. I'll forward that to you in town council.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You'll probably get the receipt in a day or two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, anything? I am glad we got that.
Yes, yes.
One less off of that list, Eric. Right. Okay. So then I want to jump right up to 3.1, and this is for an appointment for the Townsend Fire EMS department. May I have a motion, please?
On the block, what was his name?
Deja Den.
What?
Deja Den.
Thank you. I make a motion that we appoint Trevor Deja Den as an on-call firefighter to the Townsend Fire EMS department.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Welcome aboard, Trevor.
Yes, welcome aboard, Trevor.
Welcome aboard.
Next one is reappointments, it looks like, for the Townsend Historic District Commissioner.
I make a motion that we appoint Lisa Struthers-Cleary.
Kelpie.
Kelpie and Ken Dorarian as school members and Al Struthers as alternate member of the Townsend Historic District Commission for a three-year term pending June 30th, 2026.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Next would be an appointment for a full member of the Townsend Historic District Commission.
I make a motion that we appoint Jerry Bocazi.
Ziegler.
Ms. Ziegler as a full member of the Townsend Historic District Committee for a three-year term pending June 30th, 2026.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, welcome Jerry. And the last one would be for the Memorial Hall Gallery Committee.
I make a motion that we appoint Lorraine Thomas to the Memorial Hall Gallery Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Lorraine, and thank you. Okay. And after, boy, we passed right through that, didn't we? Hey. We've got enough time, so we can go down to meeting business 4.1. Discuss and assign the Select Board Liaison assignments.
I'd like to discuss the assignment as it was spread out because of health reasons and because of personal growth. I'd like to ask that I be considered for our public safety, but I'm still willing to stay as capital planning because that does regress.
All right. So, meaning as far as the.
I think you had me on what I, basically what I was on last year, and you had public safety second. Oh, God, that's what I'm asking to be assigned, if possible. But because capital planning runs, I can understand why you would want me to continue with that. And because I'm a veteran, I can understand why you might want me to continue with that. I'm more than willing to keep those two assignments.
Well, I'd actually given this a lot of thought and I, I, I understand and I appreciate what you're, what you're, what you're asking. As far as as far as public safety is concerned, I know that we had, when I first started, there was some issues with the fire department and Joe was there to help out with the, with the fire department in that respect. And I also, as he's a retired lieutenant from the fire department, so he had really helped us out with getting that in order. I know that we have negotiations that had concluded with the police department. And I, I just find that his drinks would be the best for public safety. I also did reach out to the chiefs and asked their opinion on who they thought would be the best fit for that. For them as well, because they're going to have to be working with them. So that's kind of why I did it the way I did it. I know for my own assignment, I, I thought that the general government was, was very large. So I tried to split it up equally between, between the two. Between the, the two remaining selectmen. But I know that I also am very involved with the IT MIS in regards to what I've been doing with the town for the last two years as well for public safety. And I know that Joe has, is very well aware of what we're doing as far as the infrastructure. There's a lot of security issues that we had to plug up and all of that kind of stuff. And I know he's aware of that. Right now, we're in stage for rewiring and implementation of something that I've been working on for two years, which actually visually you guys will see very shortly in the next few months on other changes that we're going to be, be having to update our IT and MIS for the entire building. So having said that, I think that I want to keep them the way that they are. Do you have anything to say, Joe?
No, I mean, I appreciate your, your nice comments. As you did say, I am a retired lieutenant in the fire department in Townsend for 15 years. So I know that end of it. I actually worked with the fire and police department for the past 45 years. So I think I would have a great fit for the public safety and I know a lot of those people. It just, it's, I appreciate that and I think you made a good decision.
So I would ask that, you know, I did feel, and I know there's different feelings on the liaison department policy, but I physically am not able to take on all those assignments. The finance committee meets at nine in the morning. That is not going to be possible for me. And what I pulled and from the policy that both of you signed, that I have to be able to accept those assignments. So I just asked that Eric ask to find out from the town council if I'm reading that wrong.
Reading what wrong? And I didn't sign this. This was Silicio, Sandy King, and Wayne Miller.
I thought I saw you signature on this.
Nope.
I think, I think.
The one I'm talking about.
I think she refers to the operating procedure.
The operating procedures.
There's no signing in the section.
It was signed by you. And it says that made by the chair, but selected, accepted by the board member. And I'm just not in a position to accept all those, all that responsibility at this time.
What operating procedure are you talking about? That's not for the liaison policy, not part of that?
It's not part of the liaison policy, but under the chairman's responsibilities and the operating procedure, there's talks about the chairman's duty to assign liaisons and other projects to coordinate. And then it does make a mention of those board members having their, so also accept those.
Okay, so you're saying you're not accepting the liaisons?
If you accept this as, as, yes, and a policy in place, yes. I can't accept all of them, but I can accept some of them. I definitely can't accept finance. It just starts too early in the morning.
So would you be open to help me split up whatever we can split up that Teresa can?
Well, I guess, yes, I would, but I think we would need to kind of verify that. I mean, I think when we all took on our job as select persons, we all knew what we were up against and we all knew what we have to do. And I think as an elected official by the people from the town, that is one of the big rules that we have to do as selectmen, be involved in meetings. And I get it. I mean, I have to do what I have to do, but I still run a, a corporation. But I make the time that I have to make to do what I have to do to be in all the meetings with the fire department, police department, and everything else. So if I have to help you, absolutely I will. But I think we as a board should continue the way we have. When I was on for 16 months, we split it up three ways. And is it easy? No, it's not easy. No one said this job is going to be easy, however. I feel all three of us should take our responsibilities.
I just want to comment that I am not saying I will not take responsibility. I'm saying that I've already done this for a full year, that I was hoping to have some growth in this position. I'm only going to go three years, so I really wanted to learn more in the public safety format. I don't think, I know there's reasons why Joe would be good in that, but I don't see where that automatically excludes me from that position. But as it stands now, I cannot accept all that's in general. Whatever it's called, general.
General government. So I, I, I respect that. What we can do is that, can you just let me know the ones that you can accept at some point?
I can do this tonight so we can wrap this up.
Okay.
The biggest one is finance, because they're like nine in the morning and it's, I feel like I'm not doing a good service to this board if I can't make the meetings.
Finances and, you know, okay.
Let me bring me other ones up.
Excuse me?
Andrea, I'm not taking comments from the, from the, this is a selectman's issue.
Yes, well, there's a change of time on the finance committee. You might be interested in that.
I'm not taking comments on it.
Yes, fine, I'm sorry. Be ill-informed.
Yeah, thank you. Conservation. I would appreciate if that's assigned of. And this MBTA transportation. And I think those are technically assigned to other people anyways, so.
They will be, but they're under the, the general government?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Take all those except for those three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is any of those three that you would want to, want to take, Joe?
I can deal with conservation.
Okay. I'll be happy. So if you take conservation, I can take MBTA and the finance committee. I'm okay with that.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you, Travis.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We're here to work as a team.
Yeah, exactly. I appreciate it. Let's see. You're going to just type up a new one, so we'll just have it. Yeah, I'll, I'll type it back up and I'll put it in SharePoint for the next meeting. And then if we have any questions, we can deal with it in the next meeting. You okay with that? 4.2 Discuss and assign Transportation Subcommittee.
If I could speak, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
So this was the Transportation Subcommittee that was formed with some very specific goals in mind. One was to obtain the bus, the additional bus for the senior center, which is completed. We have the titles of the bus and it's, you know, it's that portion of that was completed. The other was, the other goal was to investigate, bring some sort of a public transit to town. And so we have, as the board knows, we've, you know, we've got an agreement with Mark. I met last week with their marketing team in preparations for a July 1 rollout of a, a Mart, a free Mart shuttle from Town Hall to the intermodal, the multimodal center in Pittsburgh. Twice in the morning and then a free shuttle from the, 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 back to Townsend twice in the afternoon. Seven days a week. So I think that the Transportation Subcommittee may have kind of reached the natural time for dissolution. And if we need it for, if the board decides they need it for some other purpose, we can reconstitute it and reassign members to it. But I think that was what we.
Right, so there is, there's also, I was just talking with Beth in regards to re-energizing. Or first, I'd like to find out what happened to our, our grant proposal that we were turned down for the, from Proctor Road, that grant that we applied for. I'd like to find out why we were, we were turned down from that specifically so that we can then work on that. And I thought this committee could work on that as well.
Okay, that would be, yeah, I mean, we still have the, two of the people on the committee are no longer here.
Yeah.
That would be Veronica and, and like.
Yeah. So I would like to see if I can get, I was talking to Beth. I mean, since I'm taking, taking on as a liaison assignment, I might as well just apply, you know, offer my services for that. And I also thought that we could talk with the services coordinator, the new services coordinator that's starting to, to be on there as well.
Sure.
Okay. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think if there are things that we want to do with it, that the board has some, some of the concrete goals to give it, I think that would be great. I just, I think that we, the goals that they were given, they kind of succeeded on.
Right, so I'm going to come up with more goals. But I think it's important for us, especially, I really would like to have a study done in the Proctor Road section of it, because I, when we did that grant, I thought it was pretty comprehensive. We had three towns that, that had put in for it. So I'd like to know specifically why that grant was turned down and what we need to do to maybe get that grant either regenerate, regenerated or, or something. But I'd like to get that on the tips report. I think that's really important.
One of the things that I was hoping to do, and this is just a segue, I don't mean to jump on this, but we have a, a grant window for some grants that's coming up on June 2nd.
Correct.
So I was hoping to be able to do, maybe get some design, apply for some, a small portion of designing work for that.
Okay.
From, from that grant proposal as part of those grants, along with a grant proposal to pave the lower fields and.
For the bus.
And maybe even, but I think I've talked to the board about the possibility of putting angled parking spaces in at the church properties.
Yes.
Instead of having five or six cars, you might be able to get 20 cars angled in there, more parking for, for Bloom Common, more parking for Town Hall. I talked to the church about that. So I was going to include those two things as kind of like a, and then the industry lot paving and lighting proposal. But I think that's, yeah, good idea.
Is there going to be any attempt to limit this to Townsend residents? And if so, how would we do that?
Wouldn't.
Is it available, like if somebody from Pepperell wants to get into town, are they available to use it?
Oh, you mean the, the shuttle?
Yeah.
The shuttle's available to anybody. Anybody and everybody.
Be looking, that's the, the key. The first year, we were hoping that, and we did with the budget we passed so that we could do it for free, so that we could find out exactly how much that's.
And it is available across the community.
Yeah, and if other, hey, if they're using the bus, then they're going to be charging them that to the person.
Yeah, we might, yeah, we might be adding a fee, a nominal fee up to the first year, so anybody can pay.
Anybody can pay, but I always thought, well, it was free, I was wondering.
No, I, I think that's a great idea. So those were my thoughts, Eric, in regards to.
Okay, so you wanted, then we would.
And you get any?
No, I think, I think that's a great idea, Travis. And I, we can move forward with some different options and outlook of the MBTA one. And I think the board that was on that committee did a great job, brought a lot of good stuff to the town. So if you're willing to step forward and do a little bit more, that's good.
Yeah, and I'd like to get the other, I know that Beth has been helping out. Absolutely. He's been doing great and I'm looking forward, yeah, and I'm looking forward to meeting the new service coordinator. So I think that would work out really well.
Great.
Okay. So we are at 6:30 and we do have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss appointment of an associate member to the Planning Board. So I do see Laurie on, Laurie, if you'd like to unmute yourself. And then you can, we have two members and you, that's a quorum, I think, right? Laurie?
Yeah, sorry. I gotta know, I don't always have great technical abilities, as you know. Yeah, so if we have, if I, yeah, I do have a quorum here, so do you want me to call to order then? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM on this Monday, Tuesday, May 15th, 16th. I'm away, I don't know what day it is, I'm sorry. And I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Robert Darian here.
Carol Hoxsey's present.
And Laura Schifrin present. As you know, Mr. Chairman, you were at our meeting when this motion was made. And there's only one thing about the motion that's not norm, I'll make the motion and then we can have discussion, I guess. Okay? I make a motion to appoint Michael Vrosko as Associate Planning Board Member by majority vote of the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to fill a vacancy with an extended term expiration date of June 2024. Is there a second? Is that Robert? Okay. And so we're making this motion to you. It's already been voted unanimously. So how does Eric want to handle this?
So the, the issue that was discussed in the Planning Board is that this term for the associate member is up in June of this year, which is, they have three more meetings left. So what we would like to do is to extend it for another year. And what, I assume that we just say that we're going to extend it for another year?
Yeah, we're just pointing him to the term from, from July 1.
Correct. Correct, so do we need to word it in the motion?
No, I think, I think.
No, that wasn't it. That, that was, we wanted him to be active for the next three meetings.
That's what we're saying. He's going to be active from now until June 30th and then active from July 1st until 20, until June of 2024.
Is that what you said, Eric?
Yeah, is Michael currently on the board?
No, he is not. He, he was, and he was until the election. So the motion was, so we do have the vacancy of that seat. And he would like to, you know, this all went through the proper channels, made the application, whatever, to be the associate member, which was a vacancy.
Right.
And the board has voted to have him put on immediately as the associate member and to be granted that term through June 30th of 2024.
You, you know what we probably should do just to make it clean is have two motions. One term to fill the associated, the associate member through June of 2023 and another to be appointed to be the associate member. and another to be appointed to be the associate member from July one, twenty three through June thirty of twenty twenty four. That makes sense.
Okay. Oh, Michael's there too. Okay. Great, guys. Um, I didn't see them. So, um, can I consider the motion that was just made, the July first to, to twenty twenty four and then do another one for that? Okay? So, um, I will have done that. And so without, it will vote this one first. Okay? So are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote on the motion to appoint Michael Vrosko as Associate Planning Board Member from July first of twenty twenty three through June fourteen, through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Just repeated the motion. I'll take a roll call vote.
Robert Theryan.
Teresa Amor, yes?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes?
Joe Shank, yes?
Carol Hosses, yes?
You didn't, you didn't vote. You just said your name.
What's that?
You didn't vote. You just said your name.
Oh, Robert Theryan, yes.
So it's unanimous.
Okay. And Laura Schifrin, yes. So that is unanimous. Um, so now I'll entertain, cause I was presenting the planning board's, um, motion before. Now I'll entertain a motion to appoint Michael Vrosko as Associate Planning Board Member on this date through June thirtieth of twenty twenty three.
Second.
Teresa seconded.
I need a first. I couldn't make that motion.
So moved.
So, okay, thank you.
You seconded.
Teresa Amor, yes?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes?
Joe Shank, yes?
Carol Hosses, yes?
Robert Theryan, yes?
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much, everyone.
Right. Thank you, Michael.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen by the planning board.
I so moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote.
Robert Theryan, yes?
Carol Hosses, yes?
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Michael.
See you later.
Thanks for watching.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, there we go. Okay. Um, next up is, uh, four point three, set select board both for fiscal year twenty twenty four. I didn't want to get too deep on this. Um, I appreciate, thank you both for your, your comments. We're going to put them all together. And then what the next step, what I would like to do is for us to, to put them in a order of priority on how we're going to do, uh, everything. Um, I know that we all had, uh, we all had common goals, which I thought was really good. So those would, would be, um, put together. Uh, the next step would then be to, to trying to prioritize what we're going to do. Um, some of the goals we have, we have, um, partially been working on, some of them we haven't. The, I know that I've been deep in the I T stuff and I really would like your input on, on that as we move forward. Um, the town administrator and I are meeting again with Guardian to take our next phase of phase forty four of a hundred and ninety phases that we've been doing. Um, and it's really kind of final, finalizing what we're politely calling the cable plant downstairs, which is, um, much like spaghetti.
Yeah.
Um, and we, we did have, um, Comcast here, uh, to help out, um, TCam was some things that they did and further discovered some good news for us that the majority of our, um, hookup is already downstairs. So we don't have to move anything from up here to down there, which is a huge part of what I was concerned about. So our next step is to be able to, um, ascertain what cables we need to have run and then find a, uh, we have to put an R P out, I think, to, to get somebody to run.
Probably just get quotes.
Yeah, get quotes to have somebody run them. Um, the cabling is going to be a lot simpler than I, I had originally anticipated. The second phase of what we're doing is the library, since we allowed the library to go with C W Mars and they're all taking, uh, taking care of all of their needs on a virtual basis, uh, through the cloud. Um, we have wireless nodes that were at the library that have now been taken down and we have, um, we're going to be adding those to Memorial Hall. So we have more Wi-Fi connectivity throughout the, um, uh, Memorial Hall. That's the next phase that we're going to have to talk about. Um, and the last phase is to whatever monies we have left over with that, we need to discuss how we're going to be allocating that, um, I T wise. And that I'd like to be a part of all three of our discussion as to how we're gonna do the phasing. Uh, we had allocated a hundred thousand, if I remember correctly, from Arpa funding. And we, we have technically dipped into it, but not, not very much right now. So we pretty much have that to, to go. We were waiting for some of the other things. Comcast, I don't think it's going to cost us mu- as much as I thought it was because of where they're going to be moving the equipment. Um, so I think we can do some really good upgrades with the money that we've already allocated for it. So I'd like you guys to help me out with that. Um, having said that, the, the last part of it is that, um, we have to reconfigure, um, this meeting room and the meeting room downstairs to, to accompany the upgrades. Uh, we're going to get a new owl and owl bar in here. So this owl is going to go downstairs so that meeting room can be connected as much as this one is here as well. Um, the, the equipment for TCam is going to be moving downstairs, um, in that, going to open up that area so that, you know, the, the, uh, selectmen's office can have room to get done what they need to get done. So those are all the things that I see as far as the I T is concerned. Um, the last part of, um, the, I think we all should consider is that what we can do, that's going to be the biggest bang for our buck is selectmen because we're all very busy. We're all going to be doing a lot of stuff. Um, there's some, I, I'd like for us to consider what we have in the, in the hopper now as far as what we're working on and seeing, putting timeframes involved. Um, historically, it's like we have some great plans and it just sits on the shelf and it never gets to, to, to be taken care of. So I'd like to take care of the stuff that we have currently. Um, there's some layover from the last board, um, just so that we can complete those projects. So that with fiscal year twenty four starts, we're, we're ready to go with what it is. You guys are on board with me on that. Good.
So as the goals were sent, I just sent like a very broad goal. When we tried to put this together, I asked if possible that we actually put measurements to, to show to step forward to go.
I agree with you. Smart goals.
Smart goals.
I agree. Um.
I'm not going to make us do the sticky exercises.
We're not right on the big board.
No, no.
No, bonded stickies.
I agree with you because the, the, the best way that I think that we can do this is to have a work session just to do that.
Yeah.
Just to, to, to do the projects. I'd like also a copy of the master plan and I'd like a copy of the housing production plan. These are the things that have already been approved and this is what the, the town and the state knows that we're going to do so that we're, we're doing, we're, we're taking a step in the right direction.
Sure.
Good. So if you guys are on board, I'm on board.
Good job.
All right. Um, all right. Four point four is to discuss, uh, the volunteer response form for the Conservation Commission. Um, this is the one that we added to, to it too. Um, I'd like to do them separate. Um, I'd really like to discuss, um, the first one there. So. Um, question for you, Eric, is that this response form was received July first of twenty twenty two.
Correct.
And.
And they're good for one year.
They're good for one year. And, um, this was received by the town clerk on June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Um, we had already voted on this though.
We didn't vote on the volunteer response form. We voted on a, um, a reappointment.
Okay.
The volunteer response form came after the, the, the word voted on the reappointment.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure to be very clear.
This has not been acted on by anyone in, in, in.
Okay. And it was resubmitted when? Do we know?
I didn't know that it's, it was, it was.
It was submitted back in then and it was never acted upon?
It was, it's never been acted upon.
Okay. All right. So that's number one. Number two is that this was also presented to us after we had formulated an agenda. And, um, it was, it was brought to, uh, the chair's attention that it was, um.
Last, you mean last month, January first?
When it was rescinded or it was taken back.
It was very confusing.
Yes. Um, it was rescinded, saying not to go forward with it. And I took it off. I didn't put it on the agenda that we had before the town meeting. So I took it off and I talked to the, um, the chair of the Conservation Commission to say that, uh, we're not going to act upon it, uh, because I'm not really clear about if it was rescinded. We then heard that it wasn't rescinded. So we wanted to clear that up. Okay? So anybody have any questions in regard to that before I entertain a motion?
Yeah, I guess I would like to get up to speed on that. So was he reappointed or did the board take a vote not to reappoint him for his commission?
Mr. Lequeer was not reappointed at, in, in, in June. So he came up for reappointment in June of twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
And the board voted to not reappoint him.
Okay.
So subsequent to that vote, he submitted a volunteer response form to, to get back on the Conservation Commission. It has not been acted on because the Conservation Commission didn't have any vacancies until recently.
Right. So has anything changed for any reason why we should change the vote of not reappointing and moving forward? And then in his opinion, I mean, if he wasn't appointed back then, and now he's back in front of the board asking to be put back on, I would find myself more leaning towards if he wasn't appointed, he wasn't appointed for a reason and I would move forward of not reappointing.
If, if I remember correctly, I believe there was, um, disharmony between him and another member of the board. Is the board still the same as when he was on the board or is that, has the board changed? Because now there's two openings.
Well, that would be, that would be my next question. Is there, is there posted vacancies for two positions on the Conservation Commission? Okay. Um,
Yeah. So that, there, there was, um, um, I, I, I did not see it firsthand. I watched, you know, videos of it when I was told about it by the, the staff. There did appear to be some disharmony between two members of the Conservation Commission, a real clash of heads. The, the person that Mr. Lequeer had, uh, was having, you know, a conflict with is no longer on the board.
If I remember correctly, the person, when they voted, when they voted or asked for him not to be rescinded, it kind of was like one person, one person, and everybody else was neutral.
Yeah. I don't want to like read too much into how they voted. I think that, that with the, when the, both of those people came up for reappointment last year and the board split on both of their reappointments. I think each one of them voting against the other. Um, and the other board members were, were to, to allow the reappointments. I think it was for one.
Go back, no, I'm sorry. Did you, did you say we have two to look at?
Well, yes.
But we don't know if he's old, right? Or if he's still on, he, or is he definitely that long?
No, he's on.
He is on.
He's on. I, I was asked by, um, by Sabrina if I would want to add this. And I was only concerned that the Conservation Commission did take a vote on it, on this one, which they did. Okay. So the second one, right, which is the second one. Um, my, my comment is, is along the same lines that, that you have, um, which is more in general, if you don't mind entertaining me. The, the importance of the Conservation Commission in this town, especially when they're going through, um, a major bylaw change, changes that they're, they're updating, um, they're really doing a lot of work. And I really, I personally feel that, um, they have been working really well. I think the, um, the conservation agent, the, um, the administrator, eh, they're all working very, very well together. Um, including planning and zoning, and they're all kind of coming together and working on a lot of things. Um, so I don't, I, I agree with you. I don't want to have disharmony on that board because they're doing some, some really good quality work right now.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if it's pertinent, but I'm also hoping to convince a biomedical engineer who has a lot of experience in this to do, join the board. So, uh, and I know he's seriously considering that.
But he hasn't written his volunteer response form yet though.
He has not filled out his response form yet.
I was spitting it to the bottom line. Multiple people to do it. He hasn't done it yet.
I'm concerned about putting filling slots and then not having anything available for three years or how long the position will be.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. I guess I'm going to pipe into this. I said, I, I think we as a board, Teresa, I don't think you were on at the time. We actually had to enact a decorum, uh, policy for how officials elected otherwise at, at open meetings. And I can remember that night very vivid right here. When unfortunately that gentleman came after us yelling and screaming. And for me, I'm going to jump on what you both have just said. There's great harmony down there in all the other groups. I don't know if it would be the right thing for us to put him back on, especially where he was not, not, uh, appointed last year by the seated board. I'm new here. But I truly, that meeting, I sat through that meeting we took, I was not impressed with that. And I, I'm not looking forward to that happening again. That's all I have to say.
Okay. So why don't we take a motion, um, take them separately?
I can tell we can just have more questions. So when when the volunteer response form comes up, does the Conservation Committee get first crack, crack at it? Get to almost like doing kind of interview process, see if this person fits?
Mm-hmm. And they recommend to the board.
Okay. So that did occur about a year ago.
Did this come in as an appointment a year ago? Did they, did they recommend?
There wasn't a vacancy at the time. So I don't know that, uh, that, that the board ever entertained it.
So we don't, there's not a process that there is one about these two people get vetted by the Conservation Committee before it comes to us?
The first thing is that it comes through with, this is not with this one, but there's a vacancy that's posted. Once the vacancy is posted and somebody comes forward, they talk, um, to the, the board and the board then says, yes, we want to, they take a vote to say whether or not that they want it. This, eh, the, the second one that came in, they said yes, um, that they wanted to, for the, for the open positions, for one of the open positions here and recommend it to the board.
And what about this? Uh-huh. Okay, got it. Yeah.
So they, they asked again to put his on here at the same time as this.
So the board did ask that this be considered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So they, they, it was somewhat of a vetting process from the Conservation.
Yes, as convoluted as it was, if there was, yeah.
Yeah, this was, it was so odd.
This is why when it came on before in front of me, I told Eric, we're going to hold off until today to do it because I wanted to make sure that all, everything was done properly before we took a vote on it. Cause I didn't want to take a vote and then have to backtrack. Cause I don't feel very well with the backstroke. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Yes? So I'll entertain a motion for, um, James Lequeer.
Okay. I make a motion that we appoint James Lequeer to the Conservation, what's the name of the board?
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission for a.
Mr. Trump.
Thank you. For a two-year term and in June thirty. For a two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah.
The second, so we're like, twenty-four.
They have two terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, one ends in a year and one ends in a year.
Right.
Okay, so this was for the two, okay, so twenty twenty.
Yes. So is there a second? Um, I'll second that. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Okay.
No, that's six and durian in them.
I'll just explain.
Great, so that does not pass. And then we'll take the motion for this one. The Lorian.
And that's just for the one year position?
No, for the two.
We can do that one for the three year.
The two year.
The, the two year to twenty-five, yeah, you can do that.
So, oh, that's right, that's one. Okay, I caught up. Okay, I make a motion that we appoint James DeRoi to the Conservation Commission. For the two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Any further discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So. Welcome, James.
There's still a seat open.
Yes.
If there's any environmental engineers in the audience.
Mr. Ryan will do a great job. He's been on the board for many, many years.
I agree.
He has the best interests of our community and I am really happy that he is coming back.
Yep, I agree. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, James.
Yep, thank you. Um. Four point five, zoning board of appeals mandatory referral for twenty-two Main Street. Um, this comes before the board again.
It's only for a very, very small one thing.
Right, so the only thing that we are asking, they're, they're asking us for comments for are, um. The proposed plan that, um, has been submitted.
And approved by the planning.
And approved by the planning board. It has a, um, it has to have a, um. ADA compliant parking space. Because of the tightness of the lot, they can't put an ADA compliance lot in the back, but they can put it in the front of the building. So the variance is for, um, them to be able to put the one ADA compliant parking spot in the front of the building. And that's all, and that's, that's all that they're.
It's all the proposals on it.
That's, that's important. So that's all that they're asking for. Um, I know that I, I've, I've actually walked the site just to look and. I took my little roller measure thing just to make sure because.
You have your own roller measure thing? That's just sad, yeah.
But it works out. I mean, it, it all works out. So I personally, I don't have any issues with it, um. With, you know, so what, whatever you guys think.
I think, I mean, it's, it's a, a, another business in town. We need to have business in town. We need to keep moving forward. And if we have to accommodate for things like that, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, I have no question, in terms of it.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, the, the one thing that I am concerned about is there have been, um. Some fines levied in regards to the way the process of this particular property is. And, um, if, if we want to consider it, uh, my wording, I had put that the select board trusts the ZDA to decide on this matter as they see fit. Um, would we want to add, um, I do ask that they condition the setback variance with conditioning. The decision with a request to also have outstanding judgments, fines and fees to the town paid in full before the decision is final.
Didn't we have that in our last?
You, we did on our last, on our last referral.
I think that's very.
Okay, and we thank you for your continued service to the town. So are you okay with that wording?
Yes, we are.
Alright, I'll do that after the, the end.
Okay.
Um, we need to, we don't need to vote on that, right? That's just.
By acclamation.
Um. Four point seven, discuss the future dates for BOS meetings. Um. I had, I can't remember if I put this in. Did I put my little notes in to fair point?
I, I, yeah, I seen your date, said you thought that was your doing, yes.
Um.
Oh, I didn't see them, I apologize.
That's okay, um, the ones that, that I highlighted. Instead of doing one. Um, I wanted to add two, they're not the first and the third. Um.
So we'll have to change that line, we're done with it, so it's Thursday, so I can meet double for it.
Right, but there's only two months.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
So we could, we could probably do something. I'm just saying that I know in November, we had two meetings that went. Joe had to bring his pajamas at one point in November. Do you remember that meeting?
Only two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, it was pretty late, so I just wanted to make sure that we split them, so we don't run into that again. Um, that was in November.
So.
Yeah, then we had one before that too.
Yes.
This July, you're proposing Tuesday and Saturday to split that one?
No, then that's not the one. Tuesday to Tuesday, July eleventh and.
Just July eleventh and the fifteenth?
Right, but I'm, that's wrong.
Could be my, my date for throwing, but I don't think. Since every appointment, I, uh.
So what is the, what is two weeks after the eleventh? Maybe it's the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so it'd be July eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And then, um, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth in November.
Okay, um, now.
Is the twenty-eighth, what is that in relation to Thanksgiving?
Uh, the eighth is, Thanksgiving is usually on the twenty-third, so that's on the third day.
Tuesday after the Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
Oh, that's usually a holiday.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably, okay. I just think it was, it was the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, then that would get a little easier.
But, but here was, this is what I was thinking, because this is what we did before and I think it works out. We can always cancel that before. You know, if there's nothing that's going to be that great, we can combine it, so we can cancel it. I think it's easier for us to cancel it than to add it, because when we added it, it usually ends up to be.
I think this way we'll have, in front of us, all of us could put them on our calendars, you know where we're going.
Yeah.
Just, uh, as a head.
Every day, just so, just to let you know, that was quite a.
Uh, and the.
Yes, I agree.
August fifteenth, I'm going to be up in Bahab and me in the, in a cabin, so internet is spotty, but I will try to follow.
That will be interesting, okay.
Okay.
You know, I do, I, everyone knows I do a lot of traveling, but I ninety-nine point nine percent of the time will zoom in, wherever I am.
Around the globe.
Wherever it be, you'll see my face.
The Malacca Islands had no zooming available.
I, I, I don't, uh. I traveled to Brighton.
Okay, so the, the two changes to the proposed li- list, just to, would be, um. In July, instead of the eighteenth, we would be doing it the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Then in November, instead of the twenty-first, we'll be doing the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Right.
Okay, so those would be the only two proposed changes.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
But that's not a change. You changed, you proposed the four changes in the twenty-eighth. There's original set for the twenty-first. Right, but that's what he proposed. Okay, got it. I got it.
Just so it's clear in the minutes.
I.
Of course Sabrina over there is trying to keep track.
We'll give you the paper.
So we don't need to vote on that, right?
Now you put that on, they, they update it, so then we can French it out.
Yeah, alright, thank you. Okay, four point eight, discuss enforcement of public lighting bylaw with building commissioner. And I don't see the building commissioner here. So, is he? Okay. So I want to lay some ground rules on this discussion. Um, we can't, or I don't think we should be discussing the bylaw. Um, any changes or anything like that. I think our, our main point here. Um, is to find out why we're here, number one, and number two. Um, a public hearing is where we would, um, solicit any comments from the public or whatever. Um, I know that there's been a lot of back and forth communication. Um, I don't want the Board of Selectmen to get involved in a board issue, because this is a board issue as far as the bylaw is concerned. Um, but I'm willing to entertain us to have a discussion on, um, um, from, I first, I want to start with the, um. With the building commissioner on, Eric, if you could give me an idea of why we're here and, and, and where, where we are with this process?
Well, well, um, I'm, received multiple requests from one resident to enforce the lighting bylaw. Um, this is going back a while now, and I guess he's been, uh, he was the architect of the bylaw. Um, looking at it from a fresh set of eyes, when I first got here, I looked into these violations. And I made a determination that they're all on public property. They're all public parking lots, period. Um, the zoning board of appeals, he appealed it and said that it is private property because it's privately owned. Um, but they didn't actually say that. I'm reading the decision here and it says that they said. Outdoor lighting applies to lighting on all private property. Um, so really, I had told this gentleman that he needs to approach the Board of Selectmen because you guys. Are the enforcing agent of the public lighting bylaw, which makes sense because he's citing Sterilite, Townsend Ford. He's citing DeLuxe, he cited every other business, but the, where I drew the line was at the end. Um, and I did cite him. I did cite him because the zoning board of appeals said that I was wrong. Um, but at this point, my job's done. Um, I would forward it to town council. And that would be it, that in accordance with what the bylaw requires as far as enforcement. Um, I feel like this person who's complaining doesn't like that answer.
Um, Mr. Brown's here. Mr. Brown's here in the, in the room, so.
I assume so. Yeah, I assume so, but I just feel like he did not like that answer and I, I, I don't know what to tell him because that is all I can do. We could find them. If you want to find all of the businesses in town over their lights, that would be a board decision. Um, I do not think that is a great decision, but it's not up to me. So I don't really know why we're here again. I mean, this, originally, the board said that all lighting is private lighting. But it was on the town warrant to make me the enforcing agent of the public bylaw. And according to them, the public bylaw pertains to publicly owned buildings. Um, that makes little sense because we wouldn't be enforcing against ourselves. If we have a problem with one of our buildings, we can have Bo change it today. Um, so I really don't understand, the bottom line is the. The zoning bylaw is for private lighting with private property, like residents. The public bylaw is for public parking places and other public places. It's, it's not any other way. I can enforce it. The Board of Selectmen is the enforcing agent for public. It's in the town code. Um, but like I said, he disagrees completely. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Teresa.
So I just want to, um, comment on, on maybe clarify a few things. If I remember correctly, I also was on the, a part of the energy commission. Uh, when this bylaw was first drafted, so this isn't a private citizen drafting this bylaw. And it, uh, went to town meeting and it was, um, voted. So I just want to get that clarification out. And I think the issue is that, even though the bylaw was drafted and put into place. If you look at, uh, and I have them in front of us, uh, general provisions for, um, enforcing. The bylaws, this was never picked up on that. And the other problem is, unlike most places. We don't have anything in our provisions that has a catchall, and if not listed here, then. This fine applies or that, that applies. So first and foremost, um, well, I'd like to clarify. Clarify that, that it's not an individual and, and it was the energy commission and two, it was voted on. At town meeting, it was voted on by law. And second of all.
In nineteen ninety-seven.
Right, and second of all, I'd like to think that if we can't come up with an enforcement code. Add it to this, that at least we speak to town council of getting a catchall phrase in this. So we don't have this in the, in the future.
Correct, so that's, that's what I mean by I don't want to get into bylaw changes, because that's not really our purview.
Gotcha.
Eric, you want to help us out with this?
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
I'm sorry, wrong Eric. I have my hand up, I wait my turn.
Upstairs, Eric.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so i- it's important for, I think, everybody, um, speaking to the public. As, as well as to the board and the people in the building, to understand that there are two, there are two separate and distinct bylaws. There's a zoning bylaw that talks about private lighting. And the zoning board and town council have determined that covers everything that's owned by a private entity. It's not owned by a public entity. And then there's a public lighting bylaw, which is in the general ordinance, is not in the zoning bylaw. That, that governs publicly owned buildings. So anything owned by the school, anything owned by the town, anything owned by the state, anything owned by any other. The campgrounds, anything that's owned, that's owned by the public is in theory covered by that bylaw. Question whether or not we could actually enforce it against any of them, that's a whole separate issue.
Correct.
What came up at town meeting was an attempt to put enforcement language in on the general bylaw. That failed, so the general bylaw has no enforcement provisions, other than, as kind of Eric said. The Board of Selectmen making a vote, taking a vote to do something. If we determine that there is a publicly owned building that is in violation. However, any privately owned building or structure that's in violation is already covered by the zoning bylaw. That means several things. Number one, it's already got enforcement and fines listed in the ordinance. But more importantly, I think Eric has, has brought this out, although it's not in the information that he submitted. There's a, there's lots of grandfathering in zoning. So if they, you got a permit to install something, it's been there for ten years, we can't enforce against it. You, you, you grandfather it. It was there, if the, the lighting was there before the bylaw was passed, it's grandfathered in. Um, and so I think one of the challenges that the building commissioner is having is there's these lighting issues. And they may or may not, um, be in violation of the bylaw, which is one thing, but they're also maybe. Grandfathering provisions that mean even if they are in violation, there's nothing that the town can do. Um, um, and so, um, I, I, I think. You know, there's a question as to whether or not. Um, if, 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 you know, as, as Eric, as, as mentioned, he sent out letters to the folks that were. Uh, in violation, letting them know, I know that some of them were coming to his office and had concerns about safety or some other concerns. And, and, and every time I was aware of it, Eric gave them, you know, the business a leeway to come up with a plan. And, and he obviously, as he told the board, he has an issue and he finds. Um, you know, the fact we had a bylaw on the books for twenty-five years and never enforced it. Is kind of a problem. Um, um, you know, nobody, I think, at this table or working in this building. Had anything to do with that lack of enforcement. That wasn't my decision, that wasn't the board's decision, it wasn't Eric's decision. To not do enforcement for that long, but we're left in a kind of a catch twenty-two where I think. If applications come forward for lighting and are brought to the attention of the building commissioner. He's aware and can make sure that they're compliant, but pre-existing lighting that was out there, that's changed out. Sometimes they don't pull permits, you know, sometimes they, the lighting, like I said, has been there for long enough such that. It's just grandfathered, there's nothing that anybody can do about it, because there was a decision made to put that in zone.
Can you explain to me what the, um, zoning board of appeals decision pertaining to this? Because I thought if, the way that it read, it meant, it stated. That, that now this would fall under the enforcement guidelines listed under zoning bylaws.
So all the private property.
But that's, and they said that these were private properties.
Right.
So these buildings that we are talking about, the zoning board, a. So these buildings that we are talking about, the zoning board of appeals said they fall under the inspector of buildings with this fine schedule.
Correct.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think that there is an outstanding enforcement question about the general bylaw that doesn't have an enforcement.
Correct.
Cause that's about, that, that would be, like Eric said, if the police station had a light that had a problem, we could just go and tell Bo, he needs to go out and change the light.
Well, it does, but I talked to Chief Sartal, he said no dice.
And I think that, I think in the bylaw, it states fire, police are exempt. So I think whoever let them on over there, unfortunately, nobody can do anything about it because they're exempt from this bylaw completely. So, can I speak? Hmm? So gentlemen, I've had a conversation with both of you in my office in length. Okay, first of all, you're all concerned about stars. I get it and I, I, you know where I stood, where I explained. This is picture, Google Earth. The upper light, the upper red is the town of Townsend at 10:00 PM last night. Okay, I don't know if you all got that in your packet. The upper light is 10:00 PM last night. For me, yeah, there's light, we're gonna get light from all other cities, all other towns. We're not a city, we're just a little town. This bylaw is 25 years old. As Eric said earlier, it's really a shame that it's never, ever been enforced for 25 years. I personally am not gonna sit here and say, okay, now we're gonna start going after everybody. My take on what I've read and I've talked, spent in-depth time with Eric. And I think the bylaw itself completely needs to go back in front of the ZBA, update it, get it. So it's absolutely understandable where it goes, what we do from here. We can't shut the entire town down with lighting because it's just not gonna work.
I responded.
Yeah, just, yeah, just let me go first and then Mike go. Um, first of all, I don't, not sure it's accurate to say it's never been enforced because I know the, uh, there were letters sent out, uh, by the building inspector. And I know new buildings were asked to comply to this law. So I don't know where we're getting, it was never enforced. Second of all, I thought we, I totally agree, we might need to look at this law, but I thought that's not what this purpose of this meeting was. This, I thought the purpose of this meeting was to determine if the zoning board of appeals decision that this is, these buildings are private buildings. Is this zoning bylaw, fee, fine schedule in effect? I thought that was the only thing we would discuss.
Right, that is, that is, and I'm going to go one step further and say that my interpretation of that is what is being interpreted as public and what is being interpreted as private is what I'm seeing is the, the major bone of contention, in which bylaw is, is for what?
And is that not the zoning board of appeals decision? Maybe Mike can explain that to us.
Well, I was gonna give Mike a chance to, and yes, that's, that's kind of where I'm going is that it does, it does, does need that. But we had Mike.
Okay, so I had all kinds of things. I mean, I, I guess it should be focused on. Let me just say, I was very involved. I, I was, I don't know if it's accurate to call me the architect of all things, maybe I was its biggest advocate. There was a whole committee, many people were involved, um, working with, worked with the planning board of that time. Um, actually planning board came to me, one of the members knew me, knew I was interested in this. Anyway, it ended up being two bylaws because it was on the advice of the town council at the time. I didn't totally understand it, it was certainly not my idea. We'd written the bylaw, intent was we would apply to everything, town buildings, schools, private property. The town council felt that you can't have a zoning regulation for town buildings. Now, I think there are other zoning regulations that affect town buildings, but in any case, that was the legal advice and was split into these two things, which makes it awkward in some respects. Um, one, one thing I want to just emphasize is this has had tremendous benefit to the town. If you drive up and down Main Street, back and forth, all of the, there are many, many properties that do comply with this, both private and public. Um, I mean, just off the top of my head, the two major shopping centers of the town, you know, the parking lots, it's all full cutoff lane. Uh, all, virtually all the school lane complies with this bylaw. Um, you had, you know, small businesses, Cherry Hill, I just drove by a couple of nights ago and realized, wow, even, even the ice cream place, you know, their parking lot is lit with downward fits and lights. Um, they managed to do it, um, all over the place, you know? Dunkin' Donuts, right here in the center, recently is one of the places that Eric, um, sent a letter to. Um, all they had to do was tip the lights down to comply and they did, and it's a tremendous improvement. Um, so I thi- I think it's been a great benefit if you see all the good lighting that's all over town now. Regarding enforcement, I really have to push back on this. The, this bylaw was very consistently enforced, uh, for many years with the previous building commissioner. And when I say enforced, it was implemented. Most of the time, I mean, when somebody came in for a permit, and I guess there's different permits that are project by involvement. I'm not an expert on the process, um, but you know, there might be a building permit or electrical permit. But he had a policy that anytime, any project, any building project that, that had a, came in and they needed a permit, if it involved outdoor lighting, he would give them the information on it. Say, you know, here are the requirements that we have, this is the policy of the town. There was a, kind of a handout with illustrations that I was actually involved in airing back when we passed the bylaw. Um, and so there was relatively rarely a need, literally enforcement. So when you say, oh, he never enforced it, that's because he told people about this and made sure that they put in the correct kind of lighting in the first place. But there were cases where things pad, went through, um, passed through cracks and sometimes lighting that wasn't compliant was put in. And he definitely, you know, enforced it. Um, sometimes I noticed it and I would, you know, send a letter or give them a call or send an email. And I, I mean, I can remember, I could name examples.
So, all right, I'm sorry, I just wanted to move this forward because again, I don't want to talk about the bylaw. I want to talk about what our next steps are.
There was enforcement. So the enforcement seemed to stop a few years ago. Now, as far as, um, grandfathering, all of these, very few, if any, of the lights that I talked about are certainly they don't predate the bylaw, they're not grandfathered in that sense. Um, as far as the, the thing with the 10-year statute now, again, I'm not a lawyer. I'd be interested in what, no, a lawyer would say about this, but you know, I actually read it. It says, well, you can't, you know, if, if it's 10 years old and, you know, you can't, you can't be forced, force somebody to alter a structure. Um, is tipping a light downward to meet a requirement that altering a structure? Because we discussed that at zoning board hearing, the zoning board agreed with me that no, that's not. I mean, they said it in a decision document, that 10-year statute of limitation wouldn't apply to, you know, putting a shield on a lighter, tipping the light down. Um, and they also definitely said, you know, this applies to all private property, private, we own property, which I think Terry made, made a point. So, you know, what, what's the next step? I mean, I have a few suggestions. I, I, um, or, you know, this whole thing came about because after I, you know, brought this to the attention of the building commissioner, he then ruled on, made that ruling about, well, he didn't think it was in his domain because it's public lighting. I strongly disagreed, it actually didn't make much sense to me, so I appealed it. He did send letters out and you know, we got some really positive changes. I mean, Dunkin' Donuts, you know, this is, you know, the, the best example of that. It's, it's really good lighting. I mean, I don't know if you want to look at the pictures I sent you on the screen, um, but.
Again, I'm looking at next step. So are we, what the, the, the reason why we're here is that the enforcement that the building commissioner has been doing is not to your liking?
Well, I, this, I never said that actually. I would say, no, it's not totally to my liking, but all that happened was he sent letters out, I believe in December. Um, I hadn't heard anything in months, so in April, I sent an email to Mr. Chartran. And I said, hey, I'm gonna be in town hall. Terry, you may remember, it was that we were doing a taping of something related to the energy committee. Um, I'm gonna be in town hall, maybe can I stop by and, uh, you know, I just want to catch up on what's going on with the lighting issue. And that led to all this back and forth. He was, he basically, you know, emailed me and said he didn't feel a lot of problems with this bylaw and so on. Well, I simply asked for, you know, can I stop in for a minute to find out the status? I wasn't really complaining, you know? Um, yeah, I would prefer, I mean, from my viewpoint, I'm a, I'm a compassionate advocate of good, you know, well-designed lighting and I would like to see this enforced. I believe it has been enforced. It, I just have to reiterate, it's been enforced all these years. It stopped a couple of years ago, enforcement stops and a lot of recent lights recently installed that have been put in out of compliance. And that was not true generally over the prior 20 years. It happened, you know, rarely, but it didn't happen all the time as it is now. So, okay, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the building department make their policy to inform people when they are gonna have projects, inform people about this requirement. You know, maybe, I mean, I would be willing to help with, come up with some updated, you know, materials or something that explains. Um, uh, as far as the specific cases that, that were in my letters, you know, obviously I'm not the enforcement person. It's, it's, it's a somewhat, the discretion of, of the town and the building commissioner. Um, I think there's certainly actions that go between, you know, sending one letter and then saying, well, the next step is take everybody to court. I mean, I don't advocate that, I don't advocate taking people to court. Uh, I think maybe follow up, have a, you know, call them up, um, uh, send a second letter.
Well, what I, what I'm hearing and what, what I think is, is, is how, um, we should move forward is that I, I agree with you that, um, it sounds to me like there should be some sort of proactive measure. Meaning, you know, if somebody's putting in construction plans, um, to, to update, renovate or build new, um, that there should be some kind of, um, information in regards to the, the lighting. I agree with that. Eric, do you agree with that? Eric Chartran?
Yes, uh, when we, when we get them, I mean, that's mainly gonna be, uh, commercial buildings, which we have very little of.
Correct.
So it would be the, at this point, it would be the water filtration plant and nothing else.
Yep.
So we can enforce on the one, but, uh, regular building permits don't usually have outdoor lighting components. That's why I believe it's in the, I, that's why I don't agree that the public bylaw pertains to, uh, just public buildings. It doesn't make sense that way, but.
Okay, well, well, I'm just, I'm trying to streamline this Eric. So I agree with you, so if you can, um, um, as far as give, uh, hand out information for any public or any building, new building, to say that we do have this bylaw and just make it aware of anybody who is doing it. The second thing is I believe that this is at a board level. I don't think it's the Board of Selectmen that should be really involved in this. If there is, um, uh, question or concern in regards to those issues, I think they should be brought in front of the, the, the board that's writing it. I, I, the, the zoning board and, and the planning board, is, those are the two boards that, that do this?
The, the planning board is typically the one that writes and updates bylaws.
Okay, well, the third piece is.
For, for the, for the zoning bylaw, the general bylaw is the purview of the, of the board's law.
Right, so I want to make sure which one we're talking about. All right, so the general bylaw is the one that is, that has to do with the enforcement. And this is what you brought up Teresa, is the general bylaw. So your suggestion was to strengthen the, the general bylaw?
Right.
And is what we, what we voted on in town meeting last was?
The general bylaw.
That was the general bylaw which did not pass.
Right.
But I think there's a way, uh, we should have this in our general bylaws anyway. There should be a catch-all phrase that says, any bylaw which doesn't have specific enforcement conditions written in, this is the enforcement. So if somebody forgets to put enforcement in the bylaw.
Come up with that?
Yes.
This is why we did the general.
It still has to go to town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
We would, we would. Put this in the, in the warrant article.
I just think it, it, it should, you know, and I know for a fact that the building department does give out information when new lighting, pure example, I applied five years, six years ago for my lighting. First thing building inspector said is here's the town bylaw. You only can have so many luminars, this is what it can be, A, B, C, and D. If it meets that, you get a permit. I got a permit. Um, so I don't think it's, it's not being enforced, it is being enforced. By what I'm reading, you stated yourself, is really kinda crazy. It's not really that clear. I, my suggestion would be, you should maybe bring it back to the zoning board of appeals.
Well, that's ours, that's ours. They're asking for the, we have to, we have.
We make a, I'll take, I make a motion that we send it back to the zoning board of appeals to rewrite the bylaw and make it clear.
It's already been to zoning. It's our, it's the board of selectmen for, we need to change the, the general bylaw.
Yeah, the zoning bylaw I think is very clear.
Yeah.
And it has enforcement, I don't think there's any, the zoning board, the zoning, the ZBA has ruled what it applies to. If there was ever any confusion about that, that's no longer a confusion. And the rest of the bylaws is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I mean, it's got your lumens, it's got your.
And that's what you're saying, that the bylaws.
Couple of comments, um, I don't actually think, I wasn't, I mean, that, um, amendment that was voted on at town meeting had nothing, I, I didn't suggest that because I feel like, right, you know, a town, basically we're talking about town buildings and schools when, when we're talking about the general bylaw of public lighting. And in practice, you know, if there's a problem with a town building, I mean, it's not gonna be enforced. It's more gonna be, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll ask to speak to Eric and say, what, what can we do? Who can we talk to about this? Um, I also just wanna, before, you know, forget, I don't believe there's any exemption for police and fire. In fact, I'm a member of the energy committee and we've been involved in a lot of projects. Um, you know, for energy saving projects, some of which have involved outdoor lighting. A lot of them involve fire stations and, and a police station. And we, as a committee, said, we want to make sure that all the lighting that's put in, uh, under this program is full cutoff lighting and it, with a few exceptions, it was.
But if I could just speak really quickly on that, the only exemption is there for temporary lighting for police and fire.
Right, like emergency, like there's a road project or something, you know, works going on at night.
That's under the, ironically, under the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, not the police station or the fire station. Fire stations are beautiful lighting, as a matter of fact. I had one complaint about, which I included in my initial letter to Eric Chartran. I actually listed the police station, you know, which admittedly, since we're talking about the zoning bylaw, you know, it was out of place, but, um, there's one light on the back of the police station that, um, you know, is not shielded. But in any case, um, I wonder if, if maybe it would be simpler to just have all lighting be covered by the zoning bylaw. I don't know, unless there really is a legal component to that.
And again, that's a change and I don't want to get into changes of the bylaw and all that. Because I, I personally feel that the boards and committees do a lot of work for us, so we don't have to do it. But if the wheel is already built, I would like to go with the wheel that you guys are building instead of creating one on our own.
But no, I didn't really, you know, I, I wasn't having, coming here with a complaint. I mean, I, I do feel that Eric's ruling about, you know, this is all public property, it just didn't make sense to me. That's why I appealed it.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, sure, I'd like to see, I mean, I'm really happy that's with the compliance that has occurred.
Mm-hmm.
And no, it's, it's, it's incomplete, uh, so yeah, it could be better. Um, there's still a lot of lights and, and these lights are not grandfathered for the most part. I mean, I could be wrong and one might be an exception either there, but they're not old enough to, because, you know, they're mostly LED lights and LED wasn't even around in nineteen ninety seven.
Well, I think that we can be able to come to some agreement, um, outside offline. I mean, I don't, I don't want to take the board's, the board's time to, to be able to, but I, I understand your position and I understand that, that there is, and to me, for something that should be pretty straightforward is pretty complicated and it really shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, one and one is two, we don't need a square root of anything here. Um, so what I, what I would like to do is, is how, how we're going to step forward. Eric Chartran, I want to thank you for your work and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. That, um, um, you know, uh, you're not jumping through hoops as well because we, we all need something, I think, a little more simpler.
Yeah. Just my, my.
One more thing.
Hang on, go ahead, Charles.
My, my biggest concern is we don't get this straightened out, which it seems to me it should be simple to get it straightened out. It's, uh, we have been enforcing this, there can be a fine for a private citizen who has, is not, you know, cheap stocks of $25. And yet, somebody who can afford it, like McDonald's or whatever, is a fine under this thing. And to me, I'd rather we get, you know, make sure that those have, have a better access to do this.
No, I agree with you and, and again, I think we can. No, I agree with you and, and again, I think we can do it much better offline.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm sorry.
And I think if you could help us out with that as well.
I, I, I think I've heard, um, what the board has said and I will, um, probably bring it to the next meeting.
Right. Yeah, all I would say is, I, I know that it must have been like for Eric Chartran, you know, if they have. Somebody come into his office and suddenly get a letter and he's, he's, you know, has to contact like fourteen businesses. You know, I get, I get that that's daunting and probably was thought, you know, I was being a pain in the neck. Um, but again, from my viewpoint, it's because it's had accumulated over several years. Um, a lot, a lot of them are pretty recent. I mean, things like Mr. Mike's mobile station that happened.
I, and I don't, I don't wanna go into specifics.
All right, all right.
Specifics on that. I just wanna keep it very general. I, I, I understand your position. I just wanna be able to say that we are gonna, this is something that we're gonna look on and we can, we can move forward with it. If you can help me out, Eric, with that. And then if we need to bring it back, we'll bring it back to, to us in a work session.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, you all set with that? And Eric, you okay with that?
I have to be. Not like I have any choice. Um, you know, I just wanna point out one thing. This bylaw does not save energy. He's asking to point the lights down. It doesn't conserve energy. So, has nothing to do with that. Um, Dunks does not comply. Dunks wall packs are still there.
So I don't wanna get into the nitty-gritty stuff, Eric. We can talk about it offline, okay?
Sounds great.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thanks for listening.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I'm not taking any other comments, Laura.
Well, thank you very much.
Um, four point nine, review and vote on town insurance proposal.
Yes.
I don't like it. That's my god.
I hear ya. I like it.
Why is it so high?
Well, it's, so, the, the, the one that we got from Mr. Hayman. The twenty twenty-four proposal is, is less than five thousand dollars more than what we paid in twenty twenty-three. Only five thousand dollars.
Okay, how much is the other proposal?
The other proposal is, um, so that was, it's forty thousand dollars more.
So the second proposal we got is forty thousand dollars more than last year's?
More than Mr. Hayman's.
Yeah.
It's not really a, so, we, we, we level budgeted it in the hope that we were gonna get some competitive proposals and maybe. Be able to save some money on insurance. That didn't happen. They only got two proposals back, one for Mr. Hayman and one for Mr. Farrow. Um, Mr. Farrow's proposal came in, um, I think like three hundred and seventy-five thousand and Mr., um. Um, uh, Mr. Hayman's came in in the three thirties. We paid three thirty-one last year. Uh, actually, there was a, there was a late addition, so it's like three thirty-four last year.
Apple's for apple, policy, policy.
Yeah, it's the, you know, there, there, there is provided.
It's quite comprehensive.
The, um, the, the, the people who, we, we also requested a quote from Maya. Everybody was provided with the policies that we currently have. So it's all public record what policies we have. So they knew exactly what they were, they were bidding against, whatever, what they needed to provide to be, to be comparable. And so, um, you know, uh, I, I would just request that the board, you know, I, I appreciate Jason for, for bringing in his, his, uh, proposal. Um, the, you know, I, I, I think emotionally, you know, that our, our current carrier. It's just more competitive and we don't really have room in the budget, so.
Eric? Eric?
Jason, where are you?
Um, Jason Farrow, who presented the second proposal for the insurance for the town. Is it okay to speak?
That's up to the chair. We, we, this wasn't really a public.
Yeah, it's not a public conversation, actually.
Okay.
And even to vote on the.
If, if they were, you know, they had been closer, that we might have. Level of negotiation, especially in a valuable day. How much should we, we ask? There you go.
Right, okay, you have one of these.
There's also, there's also the possibility. Well, but keep sent. But that, yeah, that, that's neither here nor there. If you're gonna do it again next year, you need to, you need to get a year. Oh, this is not a new contract. Since the contractor previously approved by the board. Fire, as you know, all the contracts in the city are contracted, needs to be different. Addenda and MOUs, well, the fire unions contract is the first one. Double check that nature is accurate, so, because it's in a new form and. All of the addenda and remem, rememations. Incorporated. Not, not doing anything differently. So this. Right, so this actually predates me. I think Bob's. First is, and I think you're aware that, um, we are working on a contingency plan. It's not available. That we, the church. Of it, project. Use that. They have. So, that's their backup. Um. Got word from the contractor, Todd. Good. So, he's the, if anyone would know, Todd would know, because he's the one who's doing that. I know that they did do some work.
Fire use, Todd. Very clean.
So, I, you know, he, he is, Vince. So, we have the backup plan and hopefully. There is a backup plan in my. Didn't go, didn't go out. There's draft of it in, in the issue. What's about a. Um, what I was hoping for today would be, um, anybody. Hopefully take a look at it, but more importantly, if the board will designate one member of the board. There's some, there's some, uh, questions you have to answer about, um. What are we going to use? What are we gonna use as? What we're judging the lowest price on, because it's all got a bunch of town buildings that are on the list. Town hall, library. Meeting room, cemetery, I think, that all three of the. Park stations, all different vintages, true. Need to rank them in our priority. So that if we can't afford all of them, we know that we're gonna get the most important. And then, uh, the, um. Need to figure out which ones we're gonna add at all. Possibly. Pricing, each building separately.
Yeah.
Well, we'll say that the town will be allowed to pick and choose which building we want.
Just one question, we just had, Eric.
Figure something different.
Listen, um, please.
This is some, this is a building assessment of our existing structures, you know. Like a five-year plan. Well, that's about to be, or, but, uh, we're gonna. Well, the thing that you're thinking about, that hasn't been put out yet, but it will.
Well, that's what. It's all a lot of very. Sanify, sanitize, not fire it.
That's it. Yeah, but those, those aren't ours. Those we build. So I think, I think some of it's logical, but there's, you know. Some of the buildings, like the, the, town's on aging and the library and this building. Obviously, half the duties is the highest traffic. Building, to my eyes, traffic, public building in the city, in the town. So we can't not do that. But the rest of the, so I, I'm, what I'm just hoping is, rather than do this in a board meeting. If the board could designate a person who could just, like, email back for a list of priorities. So, there's a copy of the sharepoint. In it, at the very end. Is a, a, a list of the building. And we just wanna kind of, because it's more of a. Our, our. Station prevents, yeah, it's in my, it's into the town administrator's updates. Have I put it in there? No, I think it's. You just, you may have to. Five. Either way, Joe, I can just. The one, and it, it's, it's basically, in the last section, we wanna kind of put them in a more, we're gonna figure out. Which ones we wanna have at at ultimate. I think it's the ones that aren't ultimate. These, gotta do these two buildings. Everything else is nothing like that. We're gonna judge on the price. Well, that's not gonna be in the. Just the, just the accident. Even after. Yeah, if RFE is ready to go out and I'm just, as long as the board doesn't have an objection, he's gonna be part of my sound administrator five-one-one. So, he, he. No, not, never, never say that.
I can't.
Good, well, Joe can help you with that.
So as long as. Uh, if you both wanna take a look at it, see if you have any issues. When, um, Joe and I come over the list, we've got priorities, I'll let everyone separately know that that's the list. All of them is objected. Well, yeah, we'll get that, that, when we get the response, we'll get that.
I wanna say.
Won't be retiring at any basis.
Um, five point one three, and that is. I just really want. It looks like we are. Yeah, the, the. There's some conversations we need to have that we can't have. My check, but I'll listen now.
We'll come over here. I think it's in the single. She's not in the country right now.
Well, I, we have that, I can send you a list. Okay. There are two, this is eleven. In the sharepoint is the, um. The proposed contract with, um, Markham for next year. On board, I think, clearly not the aware. We, um. We came up with some creative solutions through our accounting. Challenge, trying to get a town accountant years. Unsuccessfully, um, we hired Melanson to be our accountant. F Y twenty-three, they got bought out during the fiscal year by Markham. Yeah, our, our contact. Um. Uh, and so, um. We came up with the idea to hire an assistant town accountant. Um, who can come and work and be here thirty hours a week. Um, down in the accounting office really, um. And have. Markham train this person. And then next year, instead of paying Markham ninety thousand dollars. They would give us a reduced contract. There would be a full-time assistant town accountant on staff. And they agreed and they, um, so for the vast, you know, since we finalized this month, month, half, so. Um, they've been training. Uh, Katie DeDane. And everything I've heard from everyone at Markham is, can you do it for me? They're all really impressed with her. We're getting reports annually, the, the monthly reports. Um, she's really on top of stuff, it's going extraordinarily well. And, um, this contract is the contract that Markham has provided. Half the cost of our, of what our tenant services was last year. And then the other, you know, we are funding, uh, uh, salary for me to see town account. And the goal would be, she's got a three-year contract to use as a town accountant, hopefully during that time she will earn. The ropes, and will have a homegrown town accountant. That's, so that's the goal, we're, we're, we're working towards that, this contract, I'm just asking. Finding the contract at Markham.
So this would have the reduction in search of.
Oh, yeah, this is not. Yeah, this is a fixed. So the, the reason why the seven thousand is broken up is that. If you're closing and opening in a fiscal year during the first two months, and when you're gonna understand. The understanding is they're gonna have to give a lot more time with us. And then the closing of fiscal year back in, then twelve. So that's why the, the pricing is spread out like that.
So we're going to have.
No, no, that's, that's under the audit. There's a separate rider in the audit. Second item with the, the RFPs, the RFPs, we're going to, where you go. Um, um, I'm just, we just have objections, there, you've already, I think there's already a vote. So as long as you show objections from the, the group. Looking at the flagpole. Uh, that, that would be it.
Uh, and reports from board liaisons, I'm just gonna. Look in that black book a little bit. Big one, water department. Didn't work. Yeah. There's a lot going on. The thing I'm like, I mean. You're ready to ask the, 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 the. First, I'm like, um. One. Say, the remaining five of them, two of them challenging. He also, one, he's not a real.
I think it's the cheap range, both of them, that they gave me. What's the charts, uh, possible, but. Let's see, there's still lots of things in the spaces open. For me, for, uh, for you, I think, um, the. The lines of, of speaking, people to be. Who is helping me, um, uh, here. Uh, the, I could say, I don't know, but I would, um, um. But given, so we're gonna have opportunities. So they're all still, I do a check, if they're giving me time, I'm just kidding, but I still think to them that, uh. It's interesting, it's, it's, it's. Also, then, that's, 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 uh, happens. But, no, it's not again.